Call to order the April 1st meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. I was gonna say like Select Board April Fools, but just call to order our regular meeting. Can you take a roll please, Jean?
Kate Kelly.
Present.
Sean Kepelin.
Here.
John Simons.
Here.
Aton Gober.
Here.
Peter Boynton.
Hi.
Chris Cosaurus.
Here.
Okay, so Chris is participating remotely today, so all votes will be by roll call vote. Okay, so let's do, um, I think we can just go right into the continued public hearings. 4:30, Ozzie Good Street, North Andover Public Schools, application for limited site plan review under Article 8, Part 3, Site Plan Review in Article 10, Administration, Section 195, 10.7, the North Andover Zoning Bylaw. Applicant proposes renovation of existing athletic facilities to include the installation of a multi-purpose synthetic turf field, reconstruction of existing tennis courts, drainage improvements, athletic lighting, and wetland restoration. Site is located within the R2 zoning district. Did you anticipate anyone coming tonight? People have been here each time, so I'm just curious.
I haven't received any calls or comments.
Okay, alright.
So, yeah, where are...
We'll just kinda see what happens.
Where are all the people going?
Yeah. Okay, so, Jean, why don't you give us a recap and we'll start from there?
Sure. So, as you know, there's a shot clock on this application, and there's one more meeting ahead of the timeline to submit the decision. That is the April 15th meeting, and the shot clock ends on April 23rd. The engineering team has submitted comments to this Stormwater Peer Reviewer who did respond late today. I sent that. I'm not sure if everybody was able to read the email. The only open item on that review is standard 4B, which I have on the screen here. Any other open item can be conditioned in a draft decision. It's typical, request the SWP plan 14 days ahead, sign an illicit discharge statement, and sign the O&amp;M plan, which are typically conditioned in the decision prior to any land disturbance. So this is the one that was referred back to the board in the Conservation Commission. My opinion on this is really to defer to the Conservation Commission. What they're proposing is within the buffer zone to a wetland on the access drive, and it's really under their jurisdiction. This property's not in the watershed protection district.
That makes sense.
I agree.
Yep, agreed.
Okay.
So, other than that, the applicant responded to a number of questions that were asked by the planning board at both the site visit and Aton. If you want to give an overview of the site visit, that would be helpful, and the questions that were responded to, I can bring up.
And that's a, there's a letter, right? That we have response?
Yep.
Okay, so why don't I do the site visit? So Kate, myself, and Peter were able to make the site visit. There was one abutter that was able to make it, and one that specifically as to the lights. And Kyle was there to present, Mr. Nugent was there, and Jean was there, and I think that was everybody that was there.
Did you say Peter?
Yep.
Yep.
It was raining, it was cold, but we got to see everything. I thought it was very helpful to see where the lights were in comparison to the residences, as well as what the vegetation was like. I think one thing that was kind of really helpful for me is I didn't understand from the drawings that the, could we have the, could we get the site put up?
Yep.
Let's see if we could go to the track. Okay, so what wasn't clear to me from the plans is that we were talking before about the, like, long jump area, and whether, and Peter had raised the question of whether or not we could move the light up a little bit into that area, or Jean has her cursor now, to try to help with some of the, kind of, light spillage and things like that. And I had some concerns about, okay, are, you know, kids gonna be, like, running into that and things like that? And there's actually a fence there, so I didn't realize on the plans that there's a fence that, kind of, fences in that whole area, so that actually, in my mind, makes it a lot more feasible to potentially move that there. The ground looks very similar to where it is, you know, a few feet, you know, maybe 10 feet back, so that was reassuring that if we did want to think about going that way, or we're having that as the plan, that that was possible, that it wouldn't interfere in any way, as I could tell, at least from the physical layout. So I thought that was helpful. It was helpful to see the neighbor, the abutting neighbor's, kind of, house, what it looks like, where the, they have a, like, a balcony, kind of, facing to the side. It was helpful to, kind of, see the angles of all of those. And then there were some, kind of, outstanding questions about, which we'll deal with next, about, you know, could we do lights at the end, kind of, by the oval portion, rather than a, kind of, a cross? So hopefully we'll get, look into the response to that. So I thought that was, that was all, kind of, very helpful. We then went down to the baseball field. Couple of notes on there. We could see at the football stadium how tall the current lights are, so that was a helpful comparison. Also, it did, so we haven't had much rain in February or March, it's basically been almost a drought, and so you would expect the ground to, kind of, have some room to soak up some water. The field was awful from the one day of rain. And, you know, I later, I later asked Mr. Nugent how long that would take for that to clear up, so it could be played on without any rain. It was probably at least a week for that to clear up, and it's rained every day, pretty much, since then. So if our spring athletes are starting in April, late March and April, it is really hard to find grass fields to play on. So that really, kind of, did drive home some of the point about why the turf is being, the synthetic turf is being requested there. We were also able to look up at the field by the track, at that turf, which is gonna be a similar, would be of a similar variety to what would be, what is requested at the baseball field. We then walked down to the tennis court area. We did see, we had, we did see where, you know, cars sometimes park. There are no parking signs there currently, and, you know, if there were cars parked on there, it would be very difficult for, say, a bus transporting kids, you know, for games, practices, things like that, to get by. And with the curve, it did not seem like a great place to park, so parking on the street there doesn't seem like a great idea, so, you know, that was just something that we'd wanted to, kind of, see, see about. I think that was the basics of the, of the site visit. I don't know if Kate or Peter have any other, kind of, things to add. It was just helpful to see where everything might be and what the current conditions are, and the current conditions are not great.
Very helpful to be able to answer.
Agreed.
Okay, alright. And thank you both and the presenters and people for coming out, even with the, even with the weather, the way it was. Okay, so why don't we turn now to the letter we received, response to board member inquiries? And so, I don't know, why don't we turn this over, Kyle? Why don't we, kind of, kind of, go into what was asked and what the responses are?
Okay. So, yeah, we'll go through these first nine or so questions, and then after that, it gets into the peer review, Stormwater Peer Review, which, as noted, appears to have been largely resolved, except for one open item, which will be, kind of, transferred over to the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. So, we are looking at question one here, which is, can proposed athletic lights poles S9 and 10, so those are the ones on the east side of the track closest to the abutters, can they be relocated closer to the center of the existing turf field? Our response to that is similar, I believe, to what it was on-site, the last Monday's site visit, which is, yes, hypothetically, these lights could be moved further into the track. The fixtures could be re-angled to achieve a similar, you know, lighting pattern on the field of play. The concern with making this adjustment now is, as was noted before, the borings have been performed across the entirety of that site at all proposed light pole locations, which was based on the original lighting design that we got from the lighting subcontractor early on in the design process. That being the case, those two borings that were performed for poles S9 and S10 have been done, they've been analyzed. If we're to move those lights now, we'd be moving 30 to 40 feet away from those borings, which is too far for them to reasonably assume geotechnical conditions are the same 40 feet away. That being the case, basically, there are two options if the lights were to move. One is that we move them, and the foundation, or the structural engineer that designs the foundations of the light poles assumes the conditions are the same, and then get into construction. Maybe that's true, but if it's not, that's a change order, and a pretty sizable one, because it will require a redesign of the foundation to dimensions we don't know.
Well, couldn't you, let's say we said, build them in these new locations, right?
Right.
And you, but build them the same way you would build them at the prior locations.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the foundation.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you did that, though, and it, and then you went to put them in and it didn't work, you could still just put them back at the prior locations, couldn't you?
We could feasibly do that.
Right.
That'd be option three.
Right.
I like that.
Right, so with, instead of doing new borings and to build it the same way, and if we can do it closer, great, if it's the same, basically the same. If not, then just move them back and do them at the original location. That, I don't think would have any additional cost.
But could you install them without doing borings?
Well, what, that's, that's, kind of, the issue, not necessarily. I mean, it's, this comes down to the structural engineers who actually design the foundations, which is not us, that's a delegated design during construction.
Yeah.
All comes down to who the lighting manufacturer ends up being, who they, who they allocate that design to. Some might be willing to do it based off of test pits, in which case, they could go out there with an excavator, they could dig down 10 feet and see if the conditions appear to match the two borings further to the east, and maybe they'll be comfortable doing it off of that, but I really, I can't say this far out that they'll be comfortable.
But I mean, they...
It's gonna be their stamp.
They build the light, this is somewhat a field of what, my knowledge, but I assume they build the light poles somewhere else and then bring them on-site.
The pole, yes, the foundations are constructed on-site.
Foundations are constructed on-site, so you have to be on there, you have to dig down.
Yep.
Either way, you're gonna have to dig somewhere.
Yep.
See if it fits, see if it works.
Right. It's a, it's a big cast-in-place foundation.
Don't you inevitably, if you consider moving it, it's a question of whether keeping what they originally had? It has to be.
I would say there's a...
I would say yes, but I, I, it's a matter of degree, though.
Well, that's, doing a boring is expensive, right? Is that...
Boring is expensive, so...
What do we mean by, I really have no idea. What does that mean?
Uh...
Five thousand, 50,000?
Minimum 10,000 for them to get out there with a drilling rig, and that's not counting the analysis and the report and the man-hours, so 15,000, 20,000 more likely for two borings. And, so that's option two, right? Option one is, like I was saying, they assume the same conditions, they excavate for the foundation, and if they find something that does not match up with those conditions, we're back to the drawing board. That's a significant added cost, that would be a change order in construction.
Well...
But we asked if there could be an option three, which would be just like one. You dig the hole that you need to dig to do the cast-in-place foundation. When you dig the first hole, you see, oh, these conditions aren't good. Stop digging, go dig the hole at the original location where we have borings, where we know it will work. You don't have to try both sites, just one. Does it work? No. Go back to the original site. I thought your answer was that that could work.
Well, I really can't provide the answer, because, again, it would not be our stamp. It would be a delegated design. I don't know what they're gonna be comfortable with. I don't know if they'll be comfortable with test pits, with just digging for the foundation, but either way, say you dig for the foundation, and it does prove that the soils do not match or they're not suitable, not only do you have to redesign, but you have, you have to pay the contractor for that digging.
Why do you have to redesign? If we already have the design, if you already have the design in place?
If what they find at the new locations does not match the original design and the original...
Right, right. My point is if they find what doesn't, if it doesn't match, then you don't do it. You just scrap it.
Then, then we...
If it doesn't match, you scrap it and just go back.
I understand that.
So, I mean, that's what I'm saying, it's all, it seems like the alternative plan is just dig a hole and sit.
Okay.
That, that's what I'm saying.
That's, that's at least a minor added cost, is all I'm saying.
Right, yeah, it's just, the only thing is if it, if it's not going, you dig the hole, it's not gonna work, you just go right, you know, no change, the instructions are go right back to what you would already provided and approved. That's my question.
Don't you, though, if you dig the hole in a different location, without doing the borings first, don't you take a little bit of risk?
Absolutely, and that's what I'm saying is...
Not to me is the big issue. Why would you, just save a few thousand dollars, put yourself at that much risk?
But, John, risk of what?
Risk of, like, the thing toppling over.
Yeah.
I agree. I agree with what John's saying 100%. That's not financially or just, in terms of risk, I don't think the contractor or the engineer would sign off on that, just from being in the business.
Okay.
So, remind me, how deep are the footings for, for these?
It depends. The borings are 20 to 25 feet, so that's, that's the picture they're getting.
Got it.
The footings, it depends if it's a drilled pier or a spread footing. Spread footings are shallower, but they're much wider.
Mm-hmm.
A drilled pier, you know, could be as much as 15 feet.
But the point is that the borings test the soil below the typical footer, and so when you get more information than you won't get from just digging the hole. So, I mean, that's a, that's a clear explanation. I appreciate that.
Okay, so then the question would be, is, is, would it be worth the cost? Is the benefit of the change of where those lights are worth the potential cost? That, the analysis?
In my opinion, no, you're...
No, 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 I'm not asking for your conclusion.
Okay.
I'm saying that's the question.
Right, it is, it is a significant added cost.
The question is, is whether moving those light poles out to, and so they're now 155 feet, you know, so moving them that distance, is that worth the additional cost of doing the new, doing, which would probably be doing the new borings?
Correct.
And, okay.
Can I comment on the...
Yeah, please.
...the cost aspect of it?
Yeah.
So, we're very tight on this project. I know 10, 15, 20,000 may not seem like a lot in the grand scope of everything that we're doing, but we already have a list of alternates, because we can't do everything that we want to do. So in the bid packet, we've got things that, you know, we're hoping, if we are within our budget, that we can add, but the base bid, so anytime we're adding a cost to our, what we believe is our base, that's gonna take away from something that we could have put there from an alternate. So just for...
Chair Chris, speak or identify yourself.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lori Berzla from the Assistant Town Manager.
So, I'm reluctant to suggest a move of 35 feet if it incurs additional cost, but, but I, I will say that while also making the observation, although it's easy to say this in hindsight, I am puzzled why the original design didn't take advantage of this alternate location, which mimics the location of the light poles on the opposite side. It does not interfere with the use of the fields, it's outside the fence, and it may have provided a benefit to the abutters. So, you know, now we're put in a position where we can only have that advantage at cost, and I appreciate the perspective from the town manager's office that cost is tight, but I, I leave this discussion puzzled why what seems like an obvious choice was not leveraged in the design.
My understanding of that is the distance that they are shown on, S9 and S10, that side by the abutters, that, if it's a track in the middle of an open field, that would be closer to their preferred distance away from the center of the field for their angling purposes. Over on the highway, they're obviously very much constrained by a right-of-way, and therefore they pushed it into 155. So, yes, that's, that's primarily my understanding as to why they designed it the way they did, and again, this process, you know, the design process, it's a, it's a six-month run, basically, from when we got this started, and we need to get the borings done very early on in the design process to keep things on schedule.
I understand all that, and I appreciate the explanation of why you think that site was chosen. It's still troubling to me, because we do try to balance the impacts on the abutters, and those lights are gonna be there for a long time. Now, with the new technology, you've shown us that if, as designed, the impact will be minimal, but it's, it's too bad we can't take advantage, at least from my perspective, of that additional distance, but I'm not advocating that we incur additional expense. I'm disappointed, but...
Yeah, no, I get it, and I like the question and the thoughts, it's, you know, there's no perfect project. I think so far this is really good, so, you know, and it's not our, it's our job to make it perfect, it's to make the best we can, kind of, right now.
I think if that lighting chart was not as good as it was...
Yeah.
I would feel much more strongly about the expense to move the poles.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay, why don't we continue on? Question two, would it be feasible to install single towers at both ends of the field?
Yep. So, again, most of these lighting-related questions, we did reach directly out to our designer for their response. These are, these are not Gail's words, these are their words. But in terms of putting lights at both the areas, so one of the primary issues of this design is it would create glare zones for the players on the field facing either direction, and that's based on whatever this IESNA, Illuminating Engineering Society of North America, that's based on their standards. That is not a design that they advise. Additionally, poles at those locations would need to be taller than the current 80-foot height, by how much, I'm not sure, but a very important point here is that this lighting scheme would fail to provide adequate lighting at all sides of the ball. So, if you have a ball anywhere on that field and you have lights at the four corners, more or less wherever it is in the field of play, those four sides, for the most part, unless you're in the very far corners, will all be lit, whereas if you're, if you only have lights at both ends and you have a ball over to the side midfield, you're not gonna have that lighting on the corners that you currently do with the current design. Long story short, if they could design with shorter poles, fewer poles, they would. This is what they need to do to achieve player safety, proper ball lighting, so on and so forth.
Okay. So that goes in, that's...
Three, we're still on lighting, so have low-level or temporary athletic lighting options been considered with this one? Their response was, low tower lighting would require at least 10 towers in lieu of the currently proposed four. In addition to this, this would significantly increase the horizontal foot candles, glare, and candellas, pretty much around the perimeter of the field. Again, a reminder, the taller they are, the better they can cut it off at the end, so the lower you are, your fixtures are gonna be angled more towards the horizontal, and therefore more glare. We do have an enclosure associated with this one. I guess, Jean, if you wouldn't mind, just jumping to page, let's see, page eight. Just a visual of, oh, little, little bit back. Yep. That diagram and then the one above it as well gives you an idea of, of that talking point there. Taller, they can angle it down, shorter, it would be angled out.
And, so, the yellow, I guess, which, which is the, I guess, the graphic, what is the...
Blue is the taller one.
No, I understand that, that's where the light is aiming, but where is the actual light?
Oh, on the left, that, those two dimensions there.
No, I see, I'm sorry, where, where is the illumination? How do we know what is being illuminated?
So for the tall light, you see the blue lines, the taller light, that, inside the blue lines, yep. Shorter light, inside the red lines.
Is illuminated. Okay.
So we're still on three there. Another important aspect of low-level lighting not being feasible on this particular project, if dark sky requirements are intended to be met, they would not be met with lower light And then in terms of temporary systems, it would be noted that each of these light towers would require their own generator, which is a significant cause of noise. Not only that, but temporary systems are short, and they have all those same issues that I just listed off for the shorter permanent fixtures.
Okay.
Question four, could the addition of parallel parking striping be considered along the high school access drive down by the tennis courts? This was, was discussed briefly on-site at last week's site visit. The full length of that access drive is currently demarcated with no parking signage. It is also Gail's understanding from speaking with high school representatives that this access drive is too narrow to allow for any sanctioned parallel parking, especially with school buses and/or, you know, coach buses with students for sports activities. So with that being the case, it is our intention not to provide parking striping as part of this project. Okay, question five, has the proposed tennis court height, fencing height been discussed with the North Andover Conservation Commission? It has not quite yet, because we were continued from that hearing last week on account of the Stormwater Peer Review not being completed at that time, so we will be meeting with them next week. This will be an item of discussion, and as discussed, I believe, in front of this board last time, additional height comes with significant added cost, significant added excavation and earthwork for the, the larger foundations, for what is, in our opinion, a diminished return in terms of how many balls it actually stops from making its way over. So, that being the case, we fully anticipate the Conservation Commission will be including some form of condition that is more maintenance geared towards cleaning that area of tennis balls, time to time. Okay, we're down to six. Can signage be added to the proposed reconstructed fence section? Short answer, yes, and the one plan change associated with this response package is, in fact, that additional signage on the abutters fence run. That is included as an enclosure, but we don't need to jump to that for that, I don't think. Question seven, could additional information be provided specific to the proposed lighting fixture and their associated shielding design? So I apologize, Miss Enright, it might be worth going to that one, which is enclosure three. So there's an actual photo of one of the light fixtures. It's sideways in this one, so normally it would be with, you can see the little LED, LED lights on the right, those would be facing down, and that is the, there you go.
Looks like one of the ships from Star Wars.
Yeah, it does.
Okay, that's helpful.
Yep.
Can you go back up to the picture?
And for reference, these will be, you know, this will not be angled horizontally to the ground, the base of that, they're, they're almost always angled downwards, in addition to the angle on top of the fixture.
And the same fixtures being added to the football field as well?
Correct.
On all light poles, not just the two new ones?
Yep.
Okay.
This one was with respect to proposed lighting along the walkway from the track to the fire department along Chickering Road. This, I believe, was discussed at the last hearing and... This, I believe, was discussed at the last hearing and long story short of that is ultimately that's a decision that would need to be made by the school department, whether or not to add lighting there. I believe it is also technically an emergency access drive for the fire department. So at the moment, that is not in this project. One item of note I'll point out here is that because of the Musco lighting system that's proposed, there will be electrical running up to that area for any future improvements. Okay, question nine, this is the last response to hearing questions. So this is can the, can the fencing, so this is the fencing east of Freeze Track against the abutters properties, could that be extended further down into the fifty-foot no build, or yeah, no build zone? So our response to that is we'll bring this up with the Conservation Commission next week. Ultimately, that's, that's going to be their call. We do not want to propose additional work in the fifty-foot that we don't have to. So we'll see what their opinion is. So that's it for written responses to anything that's come up in the hearings or at the site visit. And other than that, the rest of this document is specific to our responses to Horsley Witten's second response package. So they responded to us. What you see here is our responses to that. And then we've since just today received Horsley Witten's third and final response package, which as noted, leaves one, one item unresolved.
Okay, so any questions, comments?
Thanks for getting back to us on all this.
So I would say at this point, unless I hear kind of otherwise, have Gene draft a decision based on the most recent plans? And if we get additional comments either at the meet, next meeting or before, we can always incorporate that, but I think we should be ready to at least vote on a decision for the next meeting based on the current plans.
Are there's, is this, are we open for comments?
Yep, yep, so, yep, we can do public comment. Melinda.
Melinda Perrone, sixty-five Meadowwood Road in North Andover. The comment from Horsley Witten with regards to upkeep, I understand from the proposal that the town wishes to, the Department of Public Works wishes to take over the upkeep of all the fields facilities. That was within the final fields plan is for the DPW to do that. Is that the case?
That is a, that is something that we are looking into, yes. It's not definite right now, but yes, that is the direction that we are looking to.
So, thank you very much. So if that's the case, will there be additional funds for the DPW to do that?
Well, that's, that's what we're working on.
So it sounds like that would likely be a collective bargaining issue, I would imagine.
So there, there are a few issues with it. Cost mainly.
Right.
And I'm not sure about the collective bargaining agreement, but it's, it's something that we are trying to move towards. It's not going to happen immediately. There's a lot of planning that has to be involved with that. It's, you know, maybe require taking on extra staff, who knows? But it's, it's not something that's going to happen right away.
So this is from family members at home who have asked that this plan be attached to DPW or whoever would be taking care of it to a management plan. Because Mr. Nugent now is out there doing the work. And as he said in one of the earlier meetings, the warranty calls for every two to four weeks. Well, he's got responsibilities. So if he has the responsibilities and he's doing every two to four weeks, or excuse me, five to six weeks, and the warranty requires that he does it every two to four weeks, I think, and, and you also are having some of the custodial assistance for school.
So I believe there's an operating and maintenance plan that, that is required as part of, one of the conditions is going to be that there be an oper, so there's already an operation and maintenance plan for the high school?
There is.
There is.
But how will it be manned? Who will be doing it? Because already, it's not being done. And that's not for any reason that the athletic department, is it failure?
So all I can say is that I don't, I don't think we have the authority to condition who must do it, other than the fact that, that there needs to be a plan for who, we can condition that there needs to be a plan and it needs to be in writing.
But there doesn't need to be funding for it.
Well, how about this?
Well, I don't think we control.
So there is currently a plan.
Right.
When, when the high school was built and the fields were done, there was a plan.
But, but what we've heard is the school has not been able to meet the conditions of the plan. So I understand that we have to stay in our lane and John's looking at me very carefully here.
He's got the hook out.
Yeah. But would this be one of those circumstances which we've done frequently where we say, okay, we condition a plan, we'd like you to come back in a year and tell us how did that plan go? And if it turns out that the plan was not able to be executed, then, I mean, why do this? What could we do? Well, what we could do is we could send a letter from the planning board to the town administrator and say, we did a look back and it's working, or it's not working. And then it's up to the town administrator to resolve it.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea because maintenance is a large public policy issue that it's even broader than this. I don't think anybody would disagree that having adequate maintenance of all your facilities is a challenge in any community. And even though it's not our job, I think this is a good way to provide some focus on the issues. So I think it's a great idea.
So I, I hesitate because there's so much that goes into operation and maintenance of the high school and it's not done, and this plan is not done in a vacuum. And there are so many things that could contribute. So you could have the best laid plans and now you have someone retire or someone, or there's an emergency somewhere and you have to focus elsewhere. I just, I just, I worry that that, it's overly specific to have it relate to this one plan and this one project and then try to make that as, I worry that that becomes more than it's anticipated, that it's meant to do.
May I, may I add, please? So this is not just one plan that Mr. Nugent is taking care of now.
Right.
It is going to be, one, two, three, four, basically five standard fields. And it, it's a job for more than one person.
Yeah.
And if Mr. Nugent was to not be there, who would be doing that? Who would know how to do that? So already, he should have backup and he should have full-time backup to take care of the fields. And as a taxpayer, we are paying to have these new fields. And yet, if I was to buy a car and then just not take care of it, that would be a failure on my part. So I think it's important that the care of this be funded as well. So I don't have, I would like to see that program for the Department of Public Works, for the Fields Department, to, to have that set up before this goes through. Because otherwise...
So that, that's, that plan is probably four years away. Just, just to be clear, the applicant in this is the North Andover School Department. The North Andover School Department is well aware that there's going to be a maintenance plan. I've actually let them know to be prepared in the budget when this comes online, that they have to plan for the work that has to be done in that operations and management plans. So this is...
Hold on, please let Lori finish and then we can get to questions.
So I just, I just want to be clear on, on the work that we're doing. We do have a vision in place where the Department of Public Works is going to do all of the fields in town, but it's, it's very much at a very, very early stage and there's a lot of things that we have to examine. But we do, the Fields Master Plan did lay out, you know, things that have to be done in order to maintain all our fields, not just the high school. And so for this project, this is a, this is a school...
Not a back and forth.
School department project that, that the school department will be in charge of and they know that there is an operation and management plan that they have to budget for.
Hold on, Sean, you have something?
So I was, I mean, I just want to go back to kind of scope and what's our jurisdiction on this? Is that so, are we limited because it's under Dover? Like, could we, like, I don't know, can we condition, like, even condition O and M plan like that?
So I think, I think an operation and maintenance plan, the existence of one?
Or look back rather?
I think yes. So operations and maintenance, I think falls under use and safety and things like that. And I think that's within our jurisdiction. But I hesitate where we're talking now, this is the school budget. I think we have no authority on the school budget, which, which has changed. If it changes to DPW, again, the town budget, I don't think we have direct control over. I think that, and I think, and I think what we normally do is say that there should be an operation and maintenance plan. And we've really, very rarely, I can't even think of an instance where we go into the finite details of who's doing what in that operation maintenance plan. And I will say that we have been doing the look backs, which I like, but we also, if something's not working, we have the right to bring it back anyway if it's not working as a change, to see if there are changes in conditions, if they're not meeting the criteria of the permit in terms of maintenance. So we can put in that it needs to be maintained and properly kept up. And if it's not, then it can be brought back in.
So can I comment on that?
Yeah.
I agree that we should not get in, and we don't have the authority to get into the finer details of the maintenance plan and into who's funding it and who's doing it. I don't think we should do any of that. I agree with you. However, we have reasonable feedback to question whether or not our condition, just our condition, will be done correctly. And that's the reason for the look back. Not because we want to talk about the budget or who's going to do it. It's just our condition said you had to have this plan and you had to execute it. A year's gone by, how did it go? And if the report comes back and says, look, we did the best we could, but instead of every two to four weeks, the best we could do was every five to six weeks, okay, thank you, stop, we're done. And we send a report from the planning board to the town manager as a matter of public policy. Condition is not being met. This is beyond our jurisdiction, but we believe it's important that we are informing you for your action.
See, to me, so one, I think we should, Gene, I'd ask you to draft a decision, have a spot for, for such a look back and we can debate it and we can talk about it. My problem is that I think with, if we're going to put on a look back, we need to have our own teeth to it. So like, if it's not meeting the lighting, for instance, then we can say you need to change the lighting.
I also think we need to look back to the lighting.
Right, and I agree. But my point is that if we're going to put look backs into decisions, I think that we need to be able to, if the terms aren't being met, to do something about it.
Okay, well, I love that idea. However, if the solution, we can identify the problem, it might be in some cases, the solution is outside of our jurisdiction.
Right, and my point...
And in the past, we have written letters.
Correct, but I don't think we can, I wouldn't be comfortable doing a look back for something where we don't have the jurisdiction to enforce. That's my point, is that if we got reports that it wasn't working or that things were done, then we could still write a letter, but that's just kind of how I think about look backs. But it can be debated, we can...
Well, I appreciate you asking to draft it and then we can debate it.
Yeah, and we can vote on it.
So is the over, like, I mean, again, like, we don't, I don't think we want to be so prescriptive in an O and M plan, but I think if we're capturing things that need to be maintained, like, you know, reasonable best efforts to maintain a warranty on things that are installed, I think that's pretty reasonable, right?
I agree.
So, I mean, and I think that could probably be captured within O and, within an O and...
I mean, I think that could be its own condition.
Yeah, or, yeah.
I think you could just have a condition that if we're going to permit something, that it should be maintained. I mean, that seems pretty reasonable.
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously, the circumstance is such that we're all sort of part of the same entity. There's no third party, private entity involved.
Right.
So it makes it a little bit different.
Yeah, no, and I think, and I think the point is well raised and I think everybody is kind of on the same page, that if it's going to, we're going to do a project, we're going to spend a good amount of money on it, we want it to be well and we want it to last, that's one of the reasons we're doing turf. I just think it's important to make sure that we're kind of doing it the right way.
Yeah.
So one last comment?
Yeah, go ahead, Peter.
The one is, I agree with the statement you just made, that if we're going to prove this, we're going to have a condition, you got to maintain it. And the expectation is you will do that. But, but the concern I have is we have feedback that there was a plan and it has not been possible to meet it. So what makes us think now that that will change? Well, there's one thing. We have feedback from the town manager's office that in four years or so, there hopefully will be a town-wide fields maintenance plan that will be funded with the DPW, all stuff that we don't need to get involved in. But what do we do about the feedback? I, I don't understand how today we could say, well, we're going to require that it be maintained and we're good to go. We know that it hasn't. There was a plan.
Yep. So, well, two things. One, if it's a condition, then again, you have, if it's not being maintained, then you can go back and amend the plan.
We won't know on a look back.
Maybe not, I don't know. I'm not sure about that. Hold on, Sean.
Yeah, so I just, maybe just, my last comment on this is that I, I think we just don't, like, I, I would, I would say we shouldn't be so prescriptive on an O and M plan because effectively it's in an autonomous body, right? That's has to manage their own fields and school systems. But I agree with Peter's is that there should be some check-in point. And I think that having a condition where at the very minimum that they're maintaining the fields, especially as, as like if we're saying, hey, we're installing something new and there's a warranty, right? Like, that's a big, like, it's a big cost. We want to make sure that we're maintaining at least the warranty, right? So...
And it's also measurable.
That is measurable, yeah.
Quantifiable.
Yeah, yeah.
And that is not getting into any of the fine details.
But, but I don't think it's in our jurisdiction of like, who does it, right?
Correct.
Like, it's just not, like, we can't, like, we can't say it's going to be the DPW or, you know, the athletic director or what have you, right? That's just not, it's not in our purview.
But I like the way you put it.
But similarly, in terms of the operation, we want to know if the, the lights are being operated within the prescribed times of day or, you know, agreed upon and, and that they're not, that they're, the lights going where we thought it would and...
So I actually think a look back on the lights is okay and appropriate. It's actually an easy thing to do and it is also measurable and it is clearly within our jurisdiction and there's something we could do about it if it wasn't working, right? So I actually don't have a problem with that and I think it's probably already something that we, we've already talked about and probably incorporated. And I think that's, so, I think that's more in line of what I would be comfortable with. But we'll vote on it, I mean, that's the whole, we get to discuss and vote. Actually, before I get back to you, Chris, do you have anything you wanted to add before I just go back to our commenter?
No, I think that's good for now.
Okay, good. Anything last?
I know you're going to be, you're going to be as a group, talking about the open space recreation plan that just came out from the Conservation Commission and Amy Maxner. I did want to point out that goal four of their goals and objectives, objective four A is make continuous investments in the maintenance and upkeep of town-owned recreational facilities. So I'm, I'm asking that the town take responsibility for maintaining those things. If the school does it, but the town pays, that's, that's my point, is that the town takes responsibility.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I could add some, what I think is pretty valuable context to the maintenance aspect of all of this.
Sure.
It doesn't resolve the deliberations as to how it's conditioned, so on and so forth. But this project, again, consists of reconstructed tennis but this project, again, consists of reconstructed tennis courts, conversion of the existing natural grass baseball field to synthetic turf, and installation of athletic lights. So starting with the athletic lights, those, in our bid specifications, require a 25-year warranty. That warranty includes maintenance, so obviously, it's a very specialty product, you can't just have your electrician local in town going and maintaining that type of equipment. So part of that 25-year warranty is that if a fixture goes out, the company comes and fixes it. So those lights are, you know, effectively covered by that warranty for a 25 years minimum. With respect to turf and natural grass, turf requires fewer laborers, fewer staff, and lower costs to maintain on an annual basis.
Right, but I think the point was that we heard at a prior meeting that it required, I forget the term, but someone to go out and rake, flatten it, right?
Raking, yep.
And Mr. Nugent was the one doing it, and couldn't do it as often as the warranties or the guidelines recommended, which leads potentially to lesser use and a quicker timetable before you have to replace it, right?
Potentially.
Potentially, right?
And again, I'm not speaking to whether it's being done or, or not.
Well, but I mean, that, that, I think that's really just the context of the, of the conversation, is if there's stuff, like, with the lights, it's easy because you have somebody else to do it, but if we have to, if there are things that we need to do as a town to maintain our, maintain the projects that we're doing, we should be doing them. But that, but that also goes with every other project that we do, right? If, when we built the A B E C C, I don't remember doing anything about, okay, making sure that people are properly taking care of the ventilation and all that stuff that we have to do, I just don't know if it's within our scope to say we're gonna be checking up on that. That's my point.
Yeah, and I think, my point is the contrast between, between the field that exists there now and what we're proposing. As we all saw, when we were out there on Monday, there were students playing on the existing turf field at Walsh Stadium, and there was no one on the natural grass field because it was fully inundated and out of plenary, and, and not a playable field. So I just think, relative to current conditions, it is a betterment, and, and again, I reiterate, it does require fewer man-hours and less cost to maintain properly, relative to it.
Yeah, I, again, I think our discussion is more, I don't know, not, not necessarily academic, but somewhat in the sense of what our roles and responsibilities are, not whether we like turf, or just like the project, or anything like that.
Nope, I, I understand, I'm just providing context, that, that was my spiel. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarification question?
Yeah.
So the O N M plan, we're gonna have to have it for the Conservation Commission, I'm assuming it's, you're gonna have the same plan, or are you adding a new plan? Like, I just don't want to get confused, and I don't want the school department to be confused about, you know, how many plans are out there that they have to follow.
It's the same plan.
It'll be the same plan.
The condition will be that the applicant actually sign that plan and take responsibility for that plan.
Okay.
In whatever manner that may be. And there's a condition to eventually incorporate it with the overall plan for the entire complex. So it's, it's considered supplementary to Elijah Plan, and we'd like to get the Elijah Plan incorporated at some point.
I mean, we've definitely heard that there's gonna be, you know, hours that the lights are gonna be operated, and how the stormwater is gonna be managed, and just really how the facility's gonna be managed within this project, and then connect that to how the high school, the current, there is an O N M plan right, for the high school right now, right? For how-
There's a, Elijah one that has not been shared at this point, is my understanding, but this is supplementary to that Elijah Plan.
Yeah.
And as far as the operating hours of the lighting and the fields themselves, I just envision that as a finding of fact, because Mr. Nugent has submitted-
That's fine.
-his thoughts on how it's gonna operate, but-
Yeah, that's fine.
So it's a finding of fact, in that the evidence has been submitted that he anticipates Monday to Thursday, and not weekends, but till nine at night during the week.
Okay. That's fine, I think that works. Okay, great. Any other additional public comments? Any additional board members' comments? Okay, so let's have a draft decision for our next meeting, which is?
Fifteenth.
April fifteenth? Tax Day, wonderful.
Yeah.
Wonderful, uh, okay. All right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your members.
All right, uh, annual town meeting zoning bylaw amendment articles. So we did present these to the select board last night, they had some questions and comments, we ran through it all, but everything seemed pretty, pretty agreeable.
Yeah, there's been no changes, other than, you see, three of the warrant articles are dated today in the file name, and that's because they're housekeeping edits, spaces, formatting, things like that, nothing material to three of them, but I just went through them more with a fine-tooth comb, and just revised them to today's date.
And did you want, just, just tell the board members about the kind of F A Q sheet that you put together?
Sure, you may see it come out tomorrow on social media, but I did a frequently asked question regarding A D Us in general, and specific to our bylaw, and so I think there's 12 questions with answers that hopefully will be in support of the article and clarify things with people that have questions, so.
Yeah, I know, I know one of the things that Kate, you had mentioned before, was like, you know, people don't necessarily understand this, or this was a, and when we went to the select board, you know, even they who are very knowledgeable, this is, the bylaw is very nitty-gritty, so the F A Qs are really a good way to do it in, you know, common language that people will understand, and answer some of their kind of basic questions. So thank you for doing that and posting that, and hopefully that leads to some additional conversations before town meeting.
So that sparks another thought, although I finalized it and shared it with our social media manager, I will add that if they have any questions, they can contact me, but I'll have her add that to the bottom of it.
And can, I, where, how will we access it? There's a high likelihood that I would want to share it with people.
Yep, so there's an A D U website that they're replaced on.
Okay.
And when the social media gets shared, it's on our town Facebook account, our town news, our town Twitter, and it goes out just via social media.
And email, right? You usually get emailing.
An email to anybody that signed up to get emails.
Yeah.
So on our homepage, anybody that, you can, you can subscribe to all these forms of social media.
Once it's, once it's sent, would you mind just emailing it to us, so that we can share it with our various-
Thank you.
Groups.
Thanks for doing that, that's, I think that's wonderful.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Okay, anybody else have any other comments, oh, about accessory, about the town meeting bylaw amendment articles?
Um, did the, did the select board have any, with the family suite extension and that kind of, okay.
They, the only comment really was, question was from Brian Roach of why we're, why, why even extend it out anyway, at all? And I said, just to really kind of give people a chance. We had a couple people that actually, you know, told me that they might want to take use of it, um, you know, so we said, why not? You know, just give them that short opportunity if they want to. That was it.
So they've all been shared with the town manager's office, they're included in the warrant, the warrant goes to print on the fourteenth, which is the day ahead of the next meeting.
So why don't we jump then into planning board report? So by state law, we have to give a, what's called a planning board report, where we vote our recommendations as a board, and these recommendations are then shared with the town meeting. Our legal requirement is to do it on zoning articles, obviously, but also any articles that are somewhat within the jurisdiction of the planning board, not necessarily that we come up with, but that somehow touch upon the things that we come up, that, that we deal with.
Things like zoning, planning, subdivision, acceptance of roadways-
Environment.
And things that have an environmental potential impact.
Okay, so, we're gonna go through those, and we're gonna make our, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask for recommendations. So we'll make a motion to recommend favorable action?
Yeah.
And that should be by Roque Hall?
Yeah. Okay. So, uh, number three, Article Three, Authorization to Accept Grants of Easements, so this allows the select board and the town to grant easements, um, oh, so three and four.
Yeah.
Three is to accept, grant, accept easements, four is to grant easements. So could I get a motion to approve favorable action?
So I'll, I'll make the motion for favorable action for Article Three and Four.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Uh, Sean?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Aye.
Okay, that is favorable action, okay. Article Eight, Water Capital Improvements. Could Gene, or Peter, or John, give us kind of a update on what this is about?
Yeah, so, this, I was just informed of this article yesterday, and so this wasn't specific on the agenda to make a recommendation tonight, so I, I would just advise that your recommendation may be to be made at town meeting.
Okay.
And if you have any questions related to this article, I can bring answers back on the fifteenth. And at any time between now and town meeting, you can vote to make a recommendation once you're comfortable, but essentially-
Can someone just tell us, yeah, what, what is it generally about?
This is essentially an article to, for the demoing of 400 Grape Pond Road, which was part of the Elijah Plan, to use that parcel as open space, and to make water treatment plant improvements. So, 1 million of the 2,180,000 is specific to the demo of Grape Pond Road.
Why are they, is there, is the water treatment plant improvements at 400 Grape Pond Road?
What, no, they have their own-
So I guess why are they, so my question is, why are they together?
Because they're, they're using the same fund, the Water Enterprise Fund.
Okay.
And they're seeking to take debt from, from that fund.
I mean, I, I think each is 100% correct, is you have to have a line item delineation of everything you're doing, your specialisms for separate things, but more broadly, I thought we always in the past got to see the entire capital budget, and is this the only capital budget item we're getting? And why are they proposing it this way as opposed to the way they normally do it?
There is a capital budget.
There is a separate capital budget.
Yeah.
In the warrant. This is because it's a debt article to take the funds from the Water Enterprise Fund.
So the Enterprise Fund articles are always separate?
I, I don't remember that being the case in the past. I, I thought they was an omnibus thing, and then they said this is how they fund all of them. Maybe, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm completely wrong, but I remember, like, all the sewer stuff was a line item.
That's in the capital budget, but this is separate from-
Yeah, but the, the sewer is, is part of an Enterprise Fund too. Um, it, it just, I, I, I mean, do we get to vote on the broader capital budget, or just?
For the past several years, I asked town council if there's anything within the capital budget that falls under the charter provision for what the planning board makes recommendations on. The chair, I was told, does not, other than yesterday, this article was raised, and I said-
Yeah.
Could this be considered an environmental impact where the planning board should make a recommendation? And that, that was the recommendation.
I mean, I, I think you have to go back and have them delineate the pieces separately, but the, the one thing I, I would like to see is, when Peter and I were on the, you know, the commission to adjudicate what to do and make a recommendation, our consultant provided an estimate of demolition costs. It would be interesting to see if whatever they end up with is close. I, I don't remember what was in the, in their study, but-
My recollection is this is ballpark, but if, if you could take a look at that 400 Grape Pond Road report and tell us what the estimate was.
Yeah.
Okay, so there, let's, let's talk about this at the next meeting, but so basically, there are two parts to this. One, to borrow some money for water treatment plant improvements. Is that delineated anywhere, like, what those are, or what it will do, or how it will benefit the town? Like, what, is it just, like, is it maintenance, is it a new, you know, piece of machinery? Like, I mean, it, obviously, it sounds, you know, making improvements to the water treatment plant sounds like a good idea, I just don't know if it's a million dollars for-
It's hard to, it's hard to vote to recommend it if we don't know what it is.
Right, if it's a million dollars for, you know, a toilet, that's not a good thing. If it's a million dollars for a piece of machinery, it's gonna make it so that for 30 years, the, you know, we can do testing and make sure the water's clean, that sounds like a great idea. Get some more clarity as to, and that, and that's, I think it's honestly more important for the town, for people to know a town meeting, than it is for us to vote, like, who cares what our five necessary votes are on that? As a resident, I'd want to know what we're actually spending the money on. And then what the benefit, I guess, of removing the house and spending the 1 million to demolish the house, to have someone speak to that.
The benefit is in the report of the 400 Grape Pond Road Committee, but this is where it could get a little complicated. When that committee made the recommendations, which were unanimous, at the start of the committee, at least I had understood that the select board would brief out at the last town meeting, here are the recommendations, but that never happened. And so now, we're going into another town meeting to spend money, and there never was a brief at the last town meeting on what the committee did, and, and it was not for the committee to do that, it was for the select board.
So, but if, if we-
And so who's gonna brief it now?
But if we pulled the, I'm not sure I can answer that, but if we pulled a report that'll at least say why there's a recommendation to spend about a million dollars to demolish the house?
Yeah, it's in the report.
Okay.
But I am, I am concerned about who's gonna brief that, because it should be the select board briefing it.
Fair enough, I just want some information to be able to vote our, what, what we recommend.
Right, but, but that's part of my concern here, is that since we're making a recommendation, it may appear that, you know, what's the big deal? The planning board should, should, should brief it, but no.
Well, it's not our, yeah, well, it'll, I'll find out who's going to present it, we can find out who's gonna present it.
So just a quick question, are we actually making a recommendation? Because I know it's a brand-new article, but it seems like, if you scroll down, Gene, it seems like select board recommendation and finance committee recommendation.
Keep going.
Keep on going.
Yeah, that's what's in the warrant right now.
Okay.
But, we're gonna make, we're gonna make a recommendation.
Okay, we're gonna make a recommendation, okay.
They're like, you know.
When this came to my attention, I asked the town leader, manager, if she felt that the planning board should also make a recommendation based on the charter, and I cut a case of the charter language in, and she said it wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
And that's why I put it on the agenda, and this was yesterday.
Got it, got it, okay.
I think it's-
Thank you for doing that.
I mean, given that water treatment is something we talk about pretty much every meeting, and the Grape Pond Road-
And the house is in the watershed, and it's in the lake.
Right, I think it's very, very-
I actually think both of them, both the water treatment plant and 400 Grape Pond are-
Oh, totally, I'm not disagree, I'm not disagreeing that we shouldn't make a recommendation, I'm just saying it's-
No, no.
It's just how it's drafted, it doesn't seem like work.
Good catch.
Part, part of the discussion of this.
All right.
And, and an observation, and it's probably way too far down the road, but the, the warrant language itself says that it's the demolition of 400 Grape Pond Road, and I found that confusing to, to say you're demolishing in a dress.
My, where the explanation says demolishing of the home.
Rather than saying demolishing buildings at 400 Grape Pond.
Yeah, yeah.
No, you're absolutely right, I just, I would not have, I just would have breezed right over.
Well, it's, it, it is interesting, the, the nomenclature I've noticed over the last five years is use addresses for everything as opposed to a description of it.
It's demolishing the structure located at-
Well, which is what it says in the explanation. Demolishing, the demolition of that home at 400 Grape Pond Road.
Yeah.
So, the explanation and the actual article may not match, which happens. Okay?
I, I think it's a good observation.
So maybe it'll get changed. Okay, let's keep going. Sorry, when you get a chance, Gene. All right, CPC.
Oh, boy.
Okay.
Okay.
So John, I don't know, do you want to just kind of go through them? I did have some questions.
Uh, yeah, let me just sort of provide some very quick context, because it's, you know, it's a fair chunk of money, and the first question is, do we have that much money? We have a balance in the fund of prior years, because we, you know, we, we basically each year bring in about close to 2.5 million from property taxes, goes up a little bit each year, but it's a good ballpark, and get roughly a half million dollars from state reimbursement. So that's the amount of money coming in, um, each year, you know, roughly 3 million or so, and occasionally we'll get, like, state grants and stuff like that, but that's what it is. But that's what it is, this year we're spending more than that, but there's, there was already a large balance in the account. So we, there was roughly between what was in the fund and the amount of money we're going to have into next year, it's roughly twelve million. So we're spending four million, so it's, there's still a lot of powder left for like things like large land purchases in the future and so forth.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Is that it seems prudent to, to husband that fund? Because when there may be an opportunity for a land purpose purchase, we may not have time to collect more money.
To, correct, and yeah, and I've been sort of acutely aware of that from the beginning of the program and have always tried to.
And you're satisfied that even though this is spending more than a typical year, that we're, we're holding enough in reserve for those purposes?
Yeah, I think there's plenty enough in reserve, and you'll see there's actually one large land purchase here this year too. So that's, you know, that's it. So that's the broader context, I think. In terms of the specifics, you know, there's what the project is, but we've also, for many of them, we've attached conditions to them. And sometimes the conditions make the, the amounts and logic more palatable. So, I mean, I can work through every one where I could deal with questions, whatever is easier, there are a fair number of them.
I have questions about the large dollar value ones.
Okay.
I actually have questions about the small dollar.
So let me, let me then, let me try to go through and I'll, you know, and let me just see, I just.
So the first one is Kitchikuk Lodge.
Yeah, so that is, everybody knows what that building is, it's the Masonic Temple. And we, we had a very robust discussion about that because, you know, one of the things that we're starting to delve into from a policy point of view is we're not doing all of our projects with either the town, the historical preservation with the town, or with the Historical Society, which is the nonprofit, sort of provides a quasi ministerial purpose. Kitchikuk Lodge is private entity, so this is, this is different. So we, what we said was, okay, first cut is, does the project match and meet with the, the terms of CPC? And it does, and the Historical Commission believes it's a historical structure. What makes this project something that we would consider doing is the conditions that we put in. It's, first of all, everybody knows the property's right at the old center. And the quid pro quo for this thing is that they will make the property available for so many hours a week to the youth center, which is actually really pretty important, so effectively.
They'll make the property what?
Available to the youth center for so many hours a week. In other words, to actually use it so we get some direct benefit back from it. The other thing is that if they ever sold the property in the future, that there would be a clawback for like a ten year time period. So that if, you know, we don't want to give them money and then not have them sell the property, make a profit and keep it for themselves. So it would be a clawback. So those are the two primary conditions in this that sort of made it palatable as a, having a public benefit there, so.
Can I ask a question about that? Some years back, didn't this fund also provide money for the church on the other side of the Rotary?
Well, yeah, I mean, if you remember, it, back about fifteen years ago, we did it before the active decision. And then last year, we actually put a large amount of money of appropriation.
Into that church.
For the church, and.
Isn't the church also a private?
It is, and in the case of the church, I think there's two key parts. One is that we got a conservation restriction, I mean, a historical preservation restriction, so that was the quid pro quo there substantially. And the other thing is that frankly, I think you could look at the church as stewards of the property. I mean, that is probably the most singularly important structure in the entire community, and they preserve it for the benefit of the town. And they've set up a separate nonprofit to do it, separate from the church. And it complies with all the rules, I think, of the active decision where it's outward facing, community facing as opposed to internal. So I think you can make the argument that they're providing a community benefit because it's, if there's any building in town that's considered to be important, it's in every picture, it's in everything.
I was just trying to understand the context, using that as another example.
Right, as another example, but we are, it is interesting, we are starting to get into more private things, and there'll be a couple of other things coming up.
So I, I actually like this one, I think that that is an important building in town. I think it need, you know, maintaining the roof helps maintain the building, and that you got to, I think that's a very significant public benefit that was allowed. And I think.
Oh, and we get to fire the first, right, the first refusal, to sell it, so that's another.
I think there, I think CPC got really a lot of public benefit out of that agreement.
Yeah. So then the two Ridgewood projects, which are really completely distinct, is the second burial ground is the old burial ground on Academy Road. It was originally, if people know a little bit of history, is that was one of the very first projects CPC funded back twenty years ago. But at that time, the, the church actually was maintained and owned the cemetery. What they realized, those three or four years ago, that they did not have the money, the resources, the capability to do it. So they asked Ridgewood to do it because they're in the, the business of maintaining a cemetery. If you remember, I think it was probably about four or five years ago, we funded a smaller project for Ridgewood to clean out the brush and everything where there were trees that were destroying the graves and so forth. And what they ended up finding was an extraordinary archaeological find there. I mean, you, if you ever get a chance to walk out, they don't want people to walk out there because of the thing. But what they found was all sorts of, you wouldn't use the term mausoleums, but they were half buried tombs there. If, if you're familiar with Boston Common, the corner by Tremont, where Gilbert Stewart is buried, it's basically the same thing as that on a smaller scale. So it's, it's, it's a lot of money and it's pretty expensive. And, you know, the, the challenge is that there are very few people that know how to do this, do this properly, so it's, it is expensive, those people are expensive. So that's the, the second burial ground project, and it's.
John, the question I had is, it seems like we're doing, doing funding for Ridgewood like almost every year. And they all seem, for the most part, like good projects, I know we had, there was one that didn't get funded a little, little ways back. But is there kind of, and these seem like legitimate, is there an end in sight, I guess is my question?
Yeah, I think we, we had a long discussion about, I think the more relevant question for that is the other project, the Aitkins Gate, which is the gate in the entrance on Webber Road Road to the property, because that's on the core cemetery. I mean, the, one of the things in the context here is that every community, you will know this, that every community in the state is required to provide for a cemetery. And many communities spend millions of dollars a year to do that. North Andover doesn't incur that cost at all. It basically, Ridgewood does that and provides that, that benefit to the community, which is actually extremely valuable. And so that's the overall focus of it. But I think to answer your question directly, I think they're close to the end of the game on this. And, you know, like John Smolak and, you know, Jim LaFonda, those guys and Joe Pelich can explain, you know, in great detail, sort of ultimately where they're going with this thing. But I think they're close to the end.
I guess I just wonder.
There's much, too much more there.
I just wonder if it might be better at some point to, rather than doing ad hoc CPC all the time, like to create a revolving fund or something like, or an ongoing thing where we contribute something rather than project by project by project by project?
Yeah, there are two ways to look at it. One of the things is that they're very resourceful and parsimonious in the way they manage the thing. I mean, because they got some of the people on the committee who do that sort of stuff for a living, so they get great value for the work that they do. But I think it's, it's probably, wouldn't be the worst thing in the world to have them come in here and even talk to this board because it's a really interesting story that they have to tell.
That'd be great, they ought to do that.
I think they did video actually explaining it, and I mean, it's, you know, people don't realize that some of the public benefit, for example, is that we have the Memorial Day event there. And they're not required to do that, but they do that out of the goodness of their heart. And, you know, and frankly, other than, Mount Auburn Cemetery is considered to be the ultimate of this type of cemetery. But this is actually one of the nicest ones in the state, so it's, it's quite a labor of love that they've done over the years there. But I think it's fair enough to your point, I think anything's up for scrutiny and, you know, why don't we have them in some time, I think. They'd love to do it, so.
Okay, I like that.
So.
They'll just spend a Tuesday night with us?
Yeah, John's here anyway.
Okay.
So this one, I've acquired, Historical Grant Pilot Program.
Yeah, that's me, that's me personally, so.
So I have questions, John, I have questions. I have questions.
I, I spent actually a lot of time and effort on this because, the reason why precipitated it was that we've had a lot of people come in to the CPC over the years who either have a historical property and are really would like to do something on the property. I mean, you know, the, the house that's right on Main Street, you know, the White House with the picket fence, and they, they talked about what they were doing and so forth, and, you know, people who are preserving barns and so forth. And a lot of people come in and we say, hey, you know, hey, you've already done the work, in some of these cases, we can't fund it. And, and the problem ends up being is, this is something for private benefit, private use, as opposed to public benefit and public use. And we have to be careful how we structure these things. So I went off and found that basically there's two communities in the, in the state on CPC that fund these projects like this, Cambridge and Springfield. Very, I mean, like a hundred X in terms of the amount of money that they spend on these projects. But it's basically to preserve and maintain historical properties in historical districts. So they actually give them, you know, it's, I think both of those communities fund the programs to the tunes of millions of dollars. I mean, it's, it's a lot of money and a lot of administration. And when I first got started and I went to the Historical Society and I said, you help on this, and they didn't want to touch it right at that time, but the Historical Commission did, and they thought it was a good idea. And I'll explain a little bit how it ties into what they're doing. But the, the idea is to have people come and say, hey, I want to do something, it may cost two, three, four thousand dollars. Can you, you fund us, and we'd have criteria and so forth. And the idea is you would get some, you have to get some benefit back from it, you have to get some communal benefit, like, for example, that they have to do an open house, or that they have to come to the Scarlet Society and explain the history of the property. And there's any number of a dozen things that you can think of that you can do. And it's meant to be on a small scale, and see if, I'm not sure it'll work. That's why we only wanted to fund it to the two to twenty-five thousand and, you know, come back and see if it works. And, but the idea is, there's a lot of historical properties in town, and anything we can do to preserve them and achieve a public benefit from it, I think is well taken. So that's, that's the premise behind it, so.
So the questions I have, so I, I think it's a small amount of money. It's not like that's going to, you know, really change a lot for the CPC or for the town or even for the people doing it. But it, it does seem like it's really private, private. And I guess I just want to, you know, most of these old homes are pretty big homes. And I assume that when people buy them, they know what they're getting into because they have to, you know, if you're in, you know, Machine Shop Village or you're in the historical village, you have to like have historical restrictions and stuff like that. So don't you know that going in, that you're going to have to like spend more?
No, not really, and I'll tell you why. I mean, I had enough people come up who sort of have a passion for that sort of thing, but don't always have the resources for it. You'd be surprised, I mean, there's a few people that have historical properties that have a lot of money, but there's actually a lot of people that have historical properties that don't have a lot of money. So that's not always the case.
So one, yeah, one of the things that mentioned at the select board last night, they talked about this, and they were talking about whether there could be income criteria or something like that, like maximum income.
I mean, you could, you could do some, that's what we talked about before we went ahead and did something like that. You know, we might want to consider something like that. But there, one of the programs I wanted to tie together is this one that's on the list that I hate.
Can I give one more suggestion, John, on that?
Yeah.
Is that similar to what you said with the, with the lodge? I would recommend that if you give a grant, that it be, let's say you do a five thousand dollar grant, that it be forgivable, that it be, actually be a loan and forgivable after, say, ten years? Because what you don't want is someone who wants to sell their property, but their, but their shutters look terrible. They spend five thousand and they sell the property, right?
That, no, actually, that's a, that's a great idea.
So make it so that you keep it over time, and then you, okay, you did what you were supposed to do, you kept it, you maintained it, and now the money is yours.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. Because, yeah, you want to create blind them, skin in the game, that sort of thing. The, one of the thing that's called HPMP implementation.
Yeah.
That's, I don't know why they did that, it's, it's Historical Society, Historical Commission Master Plan Implementation. And one of the things that they're doing as part of that is a full cataloguing of all the properties in town that are over, you know, that are considered to be historical. So it actually dovetails sort of very nicely with that, I think. And, you know, I didn't know they were doing that, but it does, I think it does tie in.
Yeah, I would just say, when you're doing it to very, like, the lodge is more of like a public institution, whereas this grant is really to private individuals, it does have the appearance, it can have the appearance of being either political or favorite. So you have to really be careful with that everything is documented and granted and there are criteria and things like that. Like, I think there is a lot of benefit to maintaining older historic homes, but you just have to be careful.
I think you're exactly right, and that's the reason why I want to do it, super small bore. I mean, we had done something years ago in the affordable housing component where they get grants, and we probably didn't scrutinize it enough in that perception of why this person get this, why this person get that. You know, you want the rules to be clear, you want to be fair. And part of it is you want to make the amount small enough so that it's not considered to be like you're really extending something. But I think your point of, you know, a clawback period or something like that is, clearly makes sense, so, yeah.
Okay, so I can tell some of these other ones?
Just.
So we got Johnson Cottage and Parson Barnard, so those are.
Yeah, just, yeah, and Joanna came in and explained those both to us. The carriage house, Laurie came in, actually presented, it's the next phase of it. I think this is going to get us to the point where we can actually use it in the carriage. For, it's going to be a combination of things. Gene, are you familiar with all the stuff that they're going to do there? But it's going to be a combination of, I think, the, like the youth center, sports. I think there are even the, is it the, not the Arbor Society, but one of the like, you know, nonprofits and stuff. It's, it's going to be spectacular.
It'll preserve it and practical use it.
A lot of practical usage, yeah.
Which one is this?
That Stevens Estate Carriage House.
Okay, thank you.
I was over, you know, this past week over there, and it looks a lot better than it did already. Yeah, I mean, it was, a while it was on the brink a little bit, but they cleaned it up a lot.
John, what's the, the next big one, is four seventy Johnson Street?
So that's the, see, this is where, that's Calzetta Farm Property that they're, you know, it's, it's an open space sports by, you know.
Is it, so it's a private residence, and this would purchase it?
This would be, it's, it's five acres of property. It, what it, what it's going to take is, you know, you know the history of the whole, of where the school is.
Just to ride my bike and get the vegetables.
This is right next to Sergeant School, the driveway.
Yeah, it's right next to Sergeant School, and it's, the one house it's not part of it, but it's basically the open field. And I think it's the farm stand is included in it, so. It actually is a benefit because then you could store stuff there and so forth, so.
But do what with the, there's a house as well, right?
The, no, the house is not going to be part of it, the house is separate.
Not the house. There's a single family farmhouse, right on the road, that will, there'll be an A and R to separate that off. They'll still live in the single family farmhouse, the small little squared house in the middle is a private house, so an A and R would separate around that.
But the farm stand is included.
Is included.
Is the farm stand going to be saved?
Yeah, they want to because they want to put stuff in there, but it's also kind of like a part of our heritage, really, so, yeah.
I remember it, I drive by, I can smell the vegetables in there.
Yeah.
All the other outbuildings, so there's a lot of kind of dilapidated barns that would be there.
Yeah, but I mean, this is great, and the good thing about the property is. pretty level. So to convert it into fields is not gonna be that expensive. So.
That's, I mean, that's a good purchase.
That's a good one, too.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. They did, yeah, did a good job on that. I'm, I'm really pleased.
You're not gonna put artificial turf in Calzetta's farm.
No.
Just lights, big lights.
I don't think we could do that.
Okay, the memorial, there was a big discussion at the select board.
Yeah, about whether, I mean, I think it's great. And was Stan Leary there? Was he was, yeah. And, uh...
Can you explain that?
So there's a, uh, the memorial, it's a, for a, um, veterans memorial across from the library at Patriots Park.
G-War?
Yeah.
Who wore a turf?
Ah, thank you.
It seemed like everybody was...
Yeah, I don't think that's a good name.
Yeah, everybody was very much in favor of a memorial, but there was a discussion between the veterans group and the Patriots Park group about the aesthetics and the design.
Okay.
So, which is out of our jurisdiction, but it was interesting.
So...
Tennis courts.
Yeah, the tennis courts, yeah. Uh, so, and the, the two, uh, two housing projects.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's it. Yeah.
Wait, can I get, anyone have any other questions, Collins?
Well, just if, the connection between this and affordable housing, it, I mean, it's just, you know, and I understand that it's part of the charter of this fund to, to partially, at least 10% goes to, to affordable housing. It just seems like a odd fit for all the other historical preservation projects.
Well, the, when CPC was passed at the state level, part of the, I mean, again, I'm gonna totally bore you, but the genesis, the genesis for CPC was in the old fashioned land bank that they had. In order to get broad statewide support for it, they had to include affordable housing in it because the cities wouldn't go for it. So the idea was that the projects were in three areas, open space and recreation, affordable housing, and , uh, the historical preservation. That would, that was the quote pro quo. So you see, like the cities, uh, Cambridge, Springfield, and Woods, that they mentioned, they spent a lot more proportionally on housing because they have relatively little open space. We spent probably relatively more on the other woods. Although we, we've done a few really large projects over the years. Most of the money being spent on affordable housing is spent two ways. One is in conjunction with the housing authority on the, and that's what this one for Fountain Drive is they're talking about expanding, uh, that eventually and adding more housing units there. And the other thing is there's the, this affordable housing trust is an entity that basically has, has money funding and they can do things between town meeting. They don't have to come to us for it. They can go, you know, a lot of the, I think like every other year, they do, uh, property in conjunction with Habitat, uh, and, uh, you know, buy the property and basically subsidize it and so forth. So that's what the focus is, but, so.
Habitat and Breeden Roos is the property with Breeden Roos is on affordable housing.
Yeah.
And then one, just one more question. Like, what percentage of the applications that this committee receives get approved?
That's a, that's a good question. I didn't mention that. The, um, you know, each year, we break for out one or two because they don't comply with the rules. Uh, this year, we, we turned down two of them. Uh, that one was, the irony is the, uh, Unitarian Church came back for more money before they spent any money. And we said, whoa, slow down. Let's go through the first tranche of money and see what you need, uh, before we give you more money because they haven't spent anything yet. So that was one. And the other one was, um, uh, the Schofield Mill, um, that, you know, people down on the end of, uh, Main Street by Sutton Street there. And it, it actually, the interesting thing about that is that what it did is historically significant because it was one of the very first mills, uh, you know, that was water powered in this, you know, area. But the building itself is underwhelming. And, um, the problem is it's got a lot of structural problems. And so they were originally gonna ask for like four hundred thousand. They cut it back to fifty-five thousand, but we said, you already have money, uh, from a prior project. Spend that money first and bring the building inspector into it and then come back and we'll decide if we want to do anything in a couple of years. So.
So otherwise they were all approved, all the applications?
All the applica, I mean, it would, yeah, they all were. I mean, there was a lot of the back and forth and, you know, as you can see, same thing at the select board, you know. Um, that's the way life is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. So can we get a motion to recommend favorable action on the CPC recommendations?
So I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action for Article Nine.
Second.
All in favor? Chris?
Aye.
Sean? John?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, Steve Yellen? Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. All right.
Very helpful.
Yeah. What else we got, Jean? Which other one?
I'm interested in the zoning amendment.
Oh, okay. What, do we have more planning board recommendations to make or?
Yeah, the zoning amendment.
Oh, okay. Great. All right. Get a motion to recommend favorable action on our A D U by law?
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article twenty-two.
Can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Aye.
Okay. Article twenty-three.
So I'll make a motion for Article twenty-three for favorable action.
Second.
All in favor? Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Aye.
All right. Family Suite, Article twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action for Article twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor? Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Aye.
Okay, Article twenty-five, Flood Plane. Can I get a motion to recommend favorable action?
I'll make a recommendation, uh, or I'll make a motion to, uh, recommend favorable action for Article twenty-five.
Second.
Second and Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. Flood Plane, Peter?
Aye.
Okay. Article twenty-six. Peter, you're gonna recuse yourself on the historical barn overlay?
I will recuse myself.
Okay. Can I get a motion to recommend favorable action on the historical barn overlay district, Article twenty-six?
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action for Article twenty-six.
Second.
All in favor? Sean?
Yes.
Uh, Chris?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? Okay. Are there any other ones, Jean? Is that it?
Come back?
You may, yes.
You don't like Rick Arthur here.
All right. So, yeah, the only one left is Article, the Article nine, which we'll talk about.
Article eight.
Article eight, okay. Great. Okay. Wonderful. Okay. So we're done with the planning board recommendations?
But just a reminder, we started this either last year or the year before. Rather than put this entire report in the warrant, because it's very duplicative, uh, we summarized the articles and the actions taken by the planning board in this type of format. And so, uh, I've commented here, the board's recommendation for Article eight will be made at town meeting. And I'll need to submit this to the manager's office ahead of your next meeting because the warrant goes to print a day ahead of your meeting. As long as everyone's okay with this.
Yep. And, uh, and the, but the planning board report itself is a separate packet that everyone gets at town meeting, right?
This is the planning board report that goes in the warrant. So CPC files a report and the planning board files a report. And this is what will be in the, and it says that actions taken are contained within each warrant article. So within each warrant article, it has the recommendation.
Okay.
And you've used this the last year or two, if it was one or two.
Save paper.
Great. Okay. Uh, discussion items, open space and recreation plan.
Okay, so I, I've sent comments that the consultant submitted an email and updated the plan to reflect the planning board comments regarding the plan. And it's in final draft mode. Included in the packet is a letter of recommendation that they would like, I'm sorry, a letter of support that they would like to submit with the plan to the state.
Okay. Uh, anything that, has everything been addressed that we wanted to be addressed?
Yes.
Wonderful.
And I would like to note my brevity.
Can I get a motion to?
Do we note it?
It's up to the chair.
So I wasn't really going to take comment on this. We discussed it once or twice as a discussion item, and we're just recommending our support of the open space and recreation plan.
We're all in favor of it. We all think it's a good thing.
Well, we did make comments and there were edits.
And they were incorporated.
Yes.
Right. But we're not, I'm not gonna make other edits now, so. Okay.
So I, I apologize for holding you up. Melinda Perron, sixty-five Meadowwood Road. On the open space and recreation plan, uh, section eight, goals and objectives. I mentioned earlier goal four, um, which is making continuous investments in maintenance and upkeep of town-owned recreational facilities. Um, that was for, again, another family member, um, who is on the baseball team. Um, but goal two, I noticed here, um, I assume that that's very important as well. Objective two A, implement regulations and policies that reduce impacts to the natural environment, as well as restore and enhance these resources. Objective two B, work with local, regional, and state partners as well as private landowners to permanently protect significant natural resources. And I know that the planning board has, uh, approved all of the protections for Lake Kachikowick. But I've come here to speak about protecting the bathwater. You're protecting the baby and I'm asking that you protect also Kachikowick Brook, particularly land within Lake Kachikowick watershed, important scenic and historic landscapes and farmland, among others. And Kachikowick Brook is a historic brook. So I wanna, I just want to remind everybody that that is how we became an industrial town. Objective two C, use nature-based solutions to adhere to the town's multi-hazard mitigation plan and maintain active status as a municipal vulnerability preparedness community. I don't feel that the implementation of a, um, synthetic turf field is a nature-based solution to our field problems. So. And then finally, objective two D, increase public awareness of local conservation land and open spaces and educate about the importance of protecting these resources and the natural environment. And I don't believe, um, that the acceptance of a synthetic turf field with crumb rubber, which percolates into Kachikowick Brook, is protecting the Brook resources. I understand that we are protecting Lake Kachikowick to the best of our ability. And I think it's time to protect Kachikowick Brook equally. And I do not believe that a synthetic turf field with crumb rubber is doing that. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Uh, so can I get a motion to, do we already do a motion? No. Motion to have the letter supporting, uh, the open space and recreation plan?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Aye.
Okay, wonderful. And we'll send that along.
Uh, thanks to everyone for entertaining all my comments.
Yep, thank you for getting them all in there. Um, all right. Um, can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March eighteenth and March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all in favor? Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes?
Aye.
Chris, thank you for joining us remotely. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Hope to see you in two weeks. All right.
See you then.
Bye. All right, very good.